This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meetings for Wednesday, February 21st. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors who are participating in this meeting are gathered in hybrid on the order extended until March 2025, which allow us to do so. I remind both, the members of the city council and the public participating remotely remain muted under recognized by the city council president. Also for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham, here. Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Tamara Smith?
Here.
JT Terrell?
Here.
Owen Zaret?
Present.
Sorry, I was letting people in to the meeting on time, so please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Now, as a part of the agenda, we're going to have us run in, a new firefighter. First, I just want to thank the fire chief, Chief Norris. Thank you for using this platform to lead the community who's going to be our new firefighters. I really appreciate that you're using the council for this, and I hope you continue in doing the same because that's the way the community can at least see who is going to be our new firefighters. I really appreciate that. The name of the new firefighter is going to be, is Aaron Banish, right? All right.
So, as the city council president said, number one, thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to come before your body and be part of this great occasion for the fire department. We've done this now over the last year or so, and it's an exciting time for us. When you look back at the fire department, this vacancy has been in our department now for about six months when Dave Safran retired. And when you look at the qualifications and caliber of Aaron Banish, it's a great addition to our organization. Aaron comes to the East Hampton Fire Department in the city of East Hampton with a great background. He has been a firefighter for the past 12 years now in the state of Massachusetts, and he's also been a paramedic for the last six years. So when you look at the ongoing demand and service levels for fire and EMS here in the region and certainly the city of East Hampton, having an individual of that caliber and expertise come to our ranks is a huge asset for our organization. So we're excited and we're happy to bring him before your city council body tonight and certainly to have the mayor swear in Aaron Banish. So I'll step aside and let the mayor swear in our new firefighter.
Thank you. May the mayor?
Repeat after me. I?
I.
Aaron Banish?
Aaron Banish.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially?
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
The duties incumbent?
The duties incumbent.
Upon me?
Upon me.
As a firefighter?
As a firefighter.
For the city of East Hampton?
For the city of East Hampton.
According to my best of my knowledge and abilities?
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities?
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
That was a little... The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
And the city of East Hampton?
And the city of East Hampton.
Congratulations!
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. President, and city council members for all your continued support.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Approve of the minutes? We don't have any minutes for proof tonight. We're going to have it done soon. Public speak time. This is the opportunity for the public to address anything regarding any topic not listed at the public hearing. This is the time to talk to the council. If you have anything to say to the council, this is the opportunity. You go to the podium. You have three minutes, and you can talk to the council. This is the opportunity. And can you please state your name and address for the record?
Hello, I am Carolyn Cushing, 143 Main Street, and I am coming here to thank the council for taking up exploring the resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. I was horrified by what happened on October 7th to Israelis, and then I've been horrified in the 138 days that have followed what has been happening with Gaza. Civilians told to move further south, civilians told to keep moving, go into Khan Yunis, go to Rafa, and now 1.5, 1.8 million people are displaced in Rafa without enough access to supplies, basic supplies, hospitals are not functioning, and there have been talking about a March 10th possible beginning of an offensive in Rafa. And so it is very timely and urgent that we get this message, the city council take it up and pass it, that we move it on to our local representatives and our senators and on to the U.S. government. And that's all I want to say. Thank you for taking it up.
Thank you.
City councilors, I am here tonight because I know that councilors Omar Gomez and?
Can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Laurel Gardner, 13 Main Street. I'm here tonight because I know that councilors Omar Gomez and Connie Denham have introduced a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire between Israel and Hamas. I hope that you will do everything in your power to see that this resolution is passed and then sent on to our congressman, our state senators, and President Biden's administration. Time is of the essence. Anyone who has paid attention to the entwined histories of Palestinians and Israelis, indeed anyone who pays attention to world history, can point recriminating fingers at so many parties for atrocities, both recent and historical. That is beside the point at this moment in time. A humanitarian crisis is playing out before the eyes of the world, and the U.S. government happens to have a great deal of influence here. Please think about this. The Gaza Strip is 25 miles long and seven and a half miles wide. Since October 7th, its residents have been told repeatedly to move south, and then they've had to move south again when their supposed safe area is safe no more. There are now over 1 million Palestinians, most of them homeless, crowded into Rafa, the most southerly area. Hospitals and their surrounds have become targets. Food, water, medicine, and a safe place to sleep are denied to more and more people daily. Today, February 21st, the United States again vetoed the U.N. Security Council's call for a ceasefire. The good news, President Biden's administration has finally begun to use the word ceasefire in crafting a counter resolution. The bad news, every day without a ceasefire represents more horrific suffering. I implore you all to work swiftly on the passage of this resolution. Thank you for your serious consideration of this matter and for all that you do for us here in East Hampton.
Thank you.
Good evening. Shelley Greenstein, Fairfield Ave. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about my story. I was raised Jewish. I went to Hebrew school. I was bat mitzvahed, and all the while learning about Israel as a safe haven for us as Jews. I learned a lot about the Holocaust and how in 1948 Israel became established as a Jewish state. We raised money to plant trees in Israel. We were taught that we had been a persecuted people for many centuries and that Israel was a place for Jews from around the world. But what I wasn't taught was how exactly it was that Israel was given this land. I later learned the Palestinian people's perspective and the true history of the establishment of Israel. Throughout the last decades, I've been horrified to watch the oppressed and the persecuted become the same type of oppressors that they proclaim to be fighting against. And I'm sickened to see how these 77 years of oppression came to a head on October 7th with the horrific massacre led by Hamas. This could have been the time to really dig deep and resolve the conflict, but vengeance became the goal, along with the opportunity for the Israeli government to finally achieve their goal of pushing Gazans off the strip once and for all, and by any means necessary. 30,000 mostly civilian deaths later, Palestinian deaths later, and almost complete destruction of Gaza and the rounding up, does that sound familiar, of Gazans at the Egyptian border. The plan is to force Egypt to accept the Gazans into their territory, and then the Israeli government is free to do as they please within the Gaza Strip. So why, as U.S. taxpayers, are we paying for all of this? We're funding the genocide. It's shocking. Here at the local level, we need to make clear that we believe in a peaceful resolution and that there needs to be a permanent ceasefire now. So let's pass a resolution declaring our city in favor of a permanent ceasefire. And so this puts a little pressure on the state level, and from there we keep going higher and higher. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see your faces. I haven't been here for a while. My name's Miriam Ansarah, and I live at 359 Main Street. And I am really pleased to hear that the council would consider a resolution supporting not just a ceasefire in Gaza, I hope, but also an end to our sending endless amounts of offensive and aggressive weapons, not defensive weapons, but defensive weapons with our tax dollars. I want to say that unusually, I'm a double Semite. I am both Arab and Jewish. And although people say antisemitic and they mean anti-Jewish, I was born a Semite and was raised a Semite. I'm one of the, is it 12 tribes that have inhabited that land since, oh, I don't know when, but at least since the beginning of written history. And I'm proud of my heritage. So, but what I want to say tonight is why should we, a city of 16,000 people in western Massachusetts, take up a resolution calling for a ceasefire, calling for an end to offensive weapons, calling for humanitarian aid? I haven't seen the resolution yet, but I'm hoping that that's what it'll say. Well, for me, the reasons are several. First of all, because we are a city that is proud of the diversity of people who have come to live here. Yes, we're 90% white, but if you think of all the nationalities here, we are a multinational city. And I think it's important that we stand up for all of the people who live here and all of the people we want to live in the United States, and that we do it at this moment in history especially. When I was growing up, we didn't know who was Muslim, who was Christian, who was Jewish among Arabs. We were all just Arabs, and we didn't know who was Ashkenazi, who was Sephardic. We were all Jews. That sort of divisiveness is something that we have made serious efforts to combat in our city, and I'm very glad that we have. But there's another reason that we should, and calling for a ceasefire as part of being a just and reasonable and moral and ethical city as part of the United States, there's another reason, which is this is our tax dollars. I haven't, about 15 years ago, a couple of people and I researched how, the National Priorities Project had put out how many firefighters, teachers, and everything else your city could pay for if it wasn't going to the military. And it was some outrageous, I mean, it was something like 900.
Thank you.
Our tax dollars?
Thank you.
Are better spent here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Avery LaValle on 90 Oliver Street. I just wanted to come tonight and tell you guys a little bit?
You just please talk to the council?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you guys?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. My bad. I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the East Hampton Town Lodging House.
We're going to have a public hearing that we're going to open soon about that.
Yeah, about 45 years ago, I was born right next door to it. I've lived there for 45 years.
Again, if you want to talk about that, you're going to have an opportunity because we're going to move to a public hearing. We're going to discuss it, and we're going to open to the public to make comments.
I was more to give you a little bit of backstory about where I came from?
Okay.
In that area?
Okay.
And how growing up there affected me as a human being. I was a small child when the lodging house was actually being used as a poor farm. And actually, growing up there, I got to see it firsthand. There was some ugliness in that, and I wanted to bring that up. As a child, the people that stayed there needed, you know, society's help, but they also, as a small kid, I feared for my safety most of my childhood living next door to that place. And for good reason. There were men that would walk up and down the street and defecate on the street, urinate on the street in front of my home. They would drink fifths of vodka and smash it on the ground or on a rock across the street down the hill where Hollister Avenue now is before it was built. And it was bad. They would throw them in my yard. I even cut my feet as a kid picking up the glass from the pop-off vodka bottles that were very plentiful in that area. It was a frightening place to grow up when that place was actually running with the capacity, the small capacity that it had for the young kids, myself, in that area. Now I have a nine-year-old daughter. But back then, when it was at the capacity of a farm, I have happy memories when they were keeping the birds. That was an interesting thing. I learned a lot about that. I was happy about that. It was a great place to learn from. The Badistonians were a great family that ran the place. They were wonderful people, and they were doing their best with the situation because even back then, the place was in a bit of disrepair. But there were good things about that place, and there were bad things about that place. And I think, coming from somebody who spent almost a half a century now being there and seeing it, I think it's important that there's some people involved in that process that you're talking about later that may have been involved or tried to have been involved for a very long time. And some of those people would include the Chiquin family, who's leased that area since I've been born, to bail hay for their grass-fed beef, which supplies local burger and all the cool restaurants around here. But anyways, I will definitely stick around and take some time later.
Thank you.
But thank you, guys.
All right, we'll take, anyone else that want to participate in public speak time? We're gonna... You're gonna let one before the public hearing, and then we're gonna open it again. Donovan?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name's Donovan Lee. I live in District 3, and I just wanted to address a number of councilors who stated in the last city council meeting that they were, quote, "people of peace and nonviolence," but in the same breath that advocate against a resolution calling for a ceasefire and the genocide occurring to the Palestinian people of Gaza. I also want the council to recall situations where the community has brought to them instances of systemic violence that are occurring here in East Hampton that are within the jurisdiction of the council. Then the council did not seem to address those issues with peace and nonviolence as their priority. For example, the militarization of the East Hampton Police Department, their ever-expanding number of military-style firearms, crowd-control weaponry, and surveillance equipment, racism happening within the school system, seniors being priced out of their homes by multimillion-dollar development companies. I think if you truly believe in peace and nonviolence, councilors, then you should have advocated for it then. You should be advocating for it now and continue to advocate for it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Donovan. Ami?
Ami.
Ami?
Ami.
Ami?
Ami. Me, Ross. We can't hear her. Did it hurt?
You muted. Muted.
She said one second.
I mean, we have to continue with the meeting. If you figure it out after the public hearing, I will let you talk as a part of the public speak time. I will take a motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Connie Denham? Aye. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
JT Terrell?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor, speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, what we have, we have one item tonight before us. It is a request from CPA to appropriate $100,000 for some pre-development activities to support and create affordable housing at the Old Town Lodging House. So Jamie, who usually does these things for us, was not able to make it, but did provide a memo, which I've supplied to all of you. The really short version of it, the lodging house was operating for a long time. It was actually, as a, as a poor farm, I learned this in the process, thought it was interesting that it was the last operational one in the United States. It has been operating for some time in, as sort of a single-room occupancy type thing, but the folks who were operating it in that capacity moved out a few years back as the condition of the place has deteriorated. The structure of the space, as it currently is, like I said, it's a series of shared, like, single-bedroom occupancies with some shared kitchens, shared bathrooms, shared living areas. The bedrooms themselves are quite small, and the amenities are not great. So in order to bring it up to the standard that modern affordable housing has, each of these units will be quite a bit bigger. Some of them will be two- or three-bedroom units, not all of them, but some of them will be. And the idea is that in order, Valley Community Development is hoping to take over the property eventually and use it as affordable housing. Because of the fact that the units are getting bigger, the existing structure is not necessarily large enough to support the number of units which an affordable housing project really needs in order to exist and function and qualify for the various subsidies that make these sorts of things viable. For that reason, they want to build an addition onto the building, and this is where we run into some small troubles because, and I don't know how many properties are, this could be one of the only properties in Massachusetts that's like this. It has an affordable housing restriction, it has an agricultural restriction, and it has a historic preservation restriction. I truly think this might be one of the most restricted properties in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so, in, sorry, there'll be an opportunity to?
Before you guys do whatever you do, I just have a moment.
So, yeah, we have a moment for public speaking a little bit. So just, the result of that is that they want to build an addition onto the building. Because of the historical preservation, there's going to need to be a good deal of site development work, not just to actually formally demarcate the borders of the property, which is one thing about it, but they're going to have to actually do some archaeological digs to make sure that there aren't, there isn't anything on the property that would prevent that building, and so that's what a lot of this money is for, is, it's not to build anything. This is not to do anything. It's site development, pre-development work that will help the city to determine what our options are, what is available, what can be done with the property, and whether this proposed partnership with Valley Community Development is a viable alternative, or whether we're going to have to look at some, either a different site layout or just a different arrangement altogether. But we won't really know what our options are until we do this pre-development work. So I just, just to be 100% clear, because I know there is a lot of history associated with this building, what we are talking about tonight is doing some studies and pre-development work, which will be necessary for whatever this property is ultimately used for. There is, the city has a plan to do a partnership with Valley Community Development. That is not something that we are going to be voting on tonight because we don't even know if that's viable. We won't know if it's viable until we do this. We also won't know if any other arrangement is viable until we do this. And if we don't do this long enough, the entire thing is going to probably just fall apart. So it sort of makes sense for us to do it sooner rather than later. For that reason, both the CPA committee and the City Council Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this. Again, this memo is available here. Barb, I don't know if you would mind just including it in the minutes or whatever. I could read the whole thing, but it'd just take a while, but I did, I think I gave you a copy, didn't I? Yeah, so, anyway, that's what I have. Happy to answer any questions. And yeah.
We're gonna allow the public to participate. We're gonna let the counselor first to make questions?
Oh, okay.
And then the public will have the opportunity to go to the podium and make questions or comments, whatever you guys decide to do. Any counsel, Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Counselor Peak, do you know with these restrictions in place, in theory, could, could the property be used as a museum? That is to say, preserve it historically and to reflect on the journey that this community has taken over the last 100 years, specifically with how it addresses housing? And I just think for its, its cultural significance, this could be a really important property to reflect on where we've come over the last, you know, 100 or so years, particularly because we have so much robust affordable housing that's being developed currently. I just wondered, do you know, because CPA funding, I know, allows for these types of projects, but would this specific property be exempt from that?
I truly don't know. That's not a proposal that the city has, has looked at, and I don't know fiscally how we would, like, staff a museum or anything like that, but I just, so I just, I want to just say this right now, that I think this is not the time or the place to propose a bunch of different solutions for what we could do with this property. That is, there's, there's going to be chances for us to make those sorts of things, those sorts of things. We could just sit here all day talking about, oh, it could be this, it could be this, it could be this. The question, the question here is, should we appropriate $100,000 to do the pre-development work that we're going to need to do in order to determine what it can be used for? That's what I have.
Counselor Zaret?
So this is actually partially an answer to my colleague and what I was going to actually ask the chair as well. But my understanding is the affordable housing deed restriction actually requires us to produce a certain amount of, I believe it's 20 or 23 units at a minimal on that site of affordable housing. So in terms of alternate uses, I think that would actually violate that requirement. I think that would actually violate that requirement. And then, I guess my other quick, may I then ask a question then? I think you already answered this, Counselor Peak, but basically, in order to really effectively do anything with that building in terms of any renovations or extension beyond the current layout, floor plan, footprint, that's the word I'm looking for, this study has to occur, right? Really, anything beyond essentially renovating the existing structure in as it exists now has to probably, you would have to undertake some form of test pits and excavation and archaeological survey, correct?
That's correct, Counselor Zerret. And in fact, even if we wanted to do something that was within the existing footprint of the building, there's still inevitably, like, there's going to have to be work to demarcate the exact borders of this property, which are not 100% clear. And so there's, you know, even if we were to find a use that could be completely contained within the existing footprint of this building, we'd still have to do that. You know, we might not have to do the test digs, but I think those are probably worth the money just to actually have a good understanding of what our possible, like, our possibilities actually are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Kozinski?
Mr. President? With all due respect to my fellow counselor, whom I do respect very much, Mr. Peak, I seem to think that this is exactly the time to bring up the subject of possibilities.
Yes.
Because going down the road with this plan will look back and if the answer is, sure, you can build whatever there, then we just spent $100,000 to find that out. We're not going to go ahead and bring affordable housing and build these extra units? I think now is the time to step back and look at it and make sure this is really the direction we want to go. And with that in mind, I know you had said that there are a number of units that Valley CDC is proposing that would qualify for affordable housing. How many units does it take to qualify for affordable housing? And it would...
I don't know their formula off the top of my head. I can say what they, I mean, what's in the memo is what they are proposing to create, which is 12 to 15 affordable studio apartments in the current building, as well as 18 to 20 affordable 1, 2, 3-bedroom apartments in a historically appropriate new building. I can say that's what they're attempting to create. I know that 12 or 15, which is what they are planning to have within the existing structure, is generally not enough. I think with these projects, usually what, I don't have this in my notes, but I believe what they normally say is that you need probably about 30.
For new construction?
Yeah.
Right? To build new?
No, just for these projects in general to qualify for the various things that are involved.
Okay, so there's no, no one would give money, as you're saying, for the town lodging to be renovated by, for historical purposes, for affordable housing, SROs, or to renovate the units? Is that what you're saying? That there's no funding source available, no grants, nothing?
What I'm saying is that the people who have proposed to do this wouldn't do that. I can't say that there's not some entity out there in the world that would potentially be interested in doing 30 SROs. I'm not sure that that's a more desirable thing at the end of the day, but I, that's not the plan that's been proposed by the agency that's hoping to take this over and manage it.
Right. The agency that's taking it over, I guess, is interested if they can put, let's say, 18 or 20 units in the old lodging house and build another 18.
Well, you said 12 to 15 studio apartments in the town lodging house and 18 to 20 in the new building.
I had seen memos that passed that said 18 to 20.
18 to 20 is in the new building.
For...
I don't know what to tell you. That's what's here.
Anyway, that's what she wrote this time.
Yes.
Yeah. The reason I bring this up is I know that once the Battistonis, I think their name was, the folks who left, were a city employee who cared for the space, once he retired, eventually the city got to the point where they hired a contract with SMOC, Southeast Middlesex Opportunity Council, I think their name is. And that was because they had had one or two other properties in the city that they were currently managing. I think there was one on Adams Street that they managed. And I know that there was one, the old Wright Homestead for women on Main Street that they had managed. And so their interest was, well, all right, you're already in town. You'll go ahead and manage the property and you can use maybe the same staff to manage the town lodging house. And so they switched over and took over the contract. They were doing okay, but the place really was needing, in need of more help. And they were in a position where they'll run the property, they'll get the rents, they'll kind of manage things, but repairing the building was beyond their scope and means. So they relied on the city. So as long as the city wasn't redoing it, then they said, hey, we can't make this work anymore and we're out of here. I understand that they still have the Wright Homestead. I'm not absolutely positive, but that's one organization that still is in town. And I had, let's say, a dream that they might be interested in having a management contract if the city found resources to rehab the Old Town Lodging. And that would make sense because that's how it was used. It could be rehabbed. I bring this up because I really don't want us to go down the road and not have discussed this at this time.
Right.
I also wonder if, let me just mention that we had approved 60 units at, in the city, I think it was 60, for the schools, the three retired schools. And we hired an agency to go ahead and do the construction. And then they would take, either do the management themselves or contract out for the management of those properties. They would seem like the ideal people who would say, you know, geez, you know, you're going to do this. Why don't you slide over and take care of 15 or 18 more over at the town lodging house? And maybe you can fit that into your plans. I don't know. That might be a solution to getting the management of the property. And if there were funds available, for example, the CPA funds available to bring the building. I think the building would qualify for historic preservation and it would qualify for affordable housing preservation. And therefore, we would have at least two sources of local income we could put to the mix for renovation, along with maybe a state grant or some other working possibility. So I'll leave that for the moment. I'll be back to it later.
Counselor Riley?
So Counselor Kozinski, for all of the sort of exploratory questions that you just asked, I definitely don't have the answer to those. I just wanted to provide a quick bit of background. So Valley CDC is a nonprofit organization. And so as a part of being a developer of affordable housing, in order to maintain all of their housing stock to be affordable, when they look at a specific property, they need to consider things like, what's the actual size of the structure? What are the prefabrication costs that go into, you know, standards of plumbing and toilets and sinks and, you know, whatever, all of the fixtures that need to go in? And based on the conditions of structures and what, because they can't make profit off of, you know, when they put these developments together. They basically have to break even at the end to maintain their status as a nonprofit organization, that sometimes there are larger numbers of affordable housing units for a specific development in order to meet that threshold for them to actually develop the property and have it all be affordable. So I think that's why we see this number being a little bit higher and why they might suggest building onto the side of it. Again, I don't know what the calculation is that they came to, but when I was on the partnership, there was lots of conversations about when places are developed. I think we, you know, they did a pitch for the Maple Street School. And part of how they designed that was to incorporate not spending a lot of money, but getting the most amount of affordability. So, you know, I think it's different if it was a private developer. They could put, you know, five or six units and sell them at market rate. And then, you know, they can kind of pad that on the back end to make affordable housing developments more affordable. So I think that the caveat here is that Valley CDC does 100% affordability. And as a nonprofit, that requires that sort of 30-unit-plus per development. So that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. Counselor Peak?
Yeah, just the one point I wanted to make. Counselor Kozinski, you have a lot of questions and a lot of them I don't have answers for because the people who actually form the, or who actually end up going out and creating these partnerships and exploring, you know, which developers might be interested and which ones aren't, as you well know, are not, is not the city council. It's the mayor and the planning department. And so there might be, you know, unfortunately, Jamie's not here tonight, but it's possible that, you know, there might be folks in the planning department or in the mayor's office who might have answers to some of that. I unfortunately do not. But what I would say, because I am on the CPA committee and because we've discussed this, is that one of the things that Valley CDC, and I believe the city, agree on, and that you seem to have a different opinion on, which is fine, but is that they don't want necessarily for these remaining units. The units that are in that building right now, they're, some of them are very small. It's like a closet with a bed in it. That you're sharing a bathroom with eight or 10 other people who also have a closet with a bed in it. So part of the reason why we're talking about doing any of this is because that's not how we actually necessarily want to house. We want to, I think that these new units would potentially have their own bathrooms, for instance, small kitchenettes in some cases, these sorts of things. They're more like a small studio apartment rather than like a... And I don't want to dislike, there's probably a time and a place for SRO housing for really, you know, I've had friends who lived in units that were really like that, where it's just a tiny, it's just a bedroom and then they, you know, they share everything, that they're renting. There's probably, there's a time and a place for that. I'm not necessarily against it. I also think that if we were to find somebody or some money to just completely bring this existing building up to the, to be exactly what it currently is, but new and up to code, that's not actually necessarily the most appealing thing because this was, these were, this is a pretty rough place for people to live. There wasn't a lot of amenities for a lot of people and, you know. I just think that one of the reasons that this place is, that we're potentially talking about a bigger footprint is because we're talking about larger units. And I think that when you actually look at what those units were, there's reasons why you could argue that that's attractive and a good thing. So that, I just wanted to say that. That's all I got.
All right, Mr. President?
Hey, Counselor Kozinski?
Have you been in the building?
I have not.
I prefer not to go back and forward. You'll make all the questions before keep going back and forward.
Who on this council has been inside the building?
I've been there.
I haven't.
Counselor, I'm looking, okay. One, I see one hand, two hands.
I've been there.
Two hands.
Yeah.
So two have. I have also. And so I speak from some experience and I did spend 40 years in real estate. So I kind of have an eye, especially, I did a lot of work with bank properties, foreclosed properties. I've seen awful places. This does not meet the standard of being an awful place. There are some rooms, and if I counted correctly, I think it's like two or three rooms, are tiny. They're small rooms. And most of the other rooms are not closets. So I didn't want to give the impression that we were talking about closet spaces and for somebody to live in. That would not be appropriate and we'd want to renovate that. I just wonder if there's also a public interest in seeing this become something and if you could create some local experienced craftsmen who might be interested. We do have Habitat for Humanity. We have people who say, this is... And I think the SRO mix is an important population. The units that we are building, as far as I know, and there is at least 250 new units. So we all speak from some experience, those of us who have been on the council, about creating affordable housing, at least 250 units. There were 70 units, 74 units, and 82 units, I think it was, two weeks ago or three weeks ago that we gave money from the CPA for at Ferry Street. And I think the other project was at, is at Main Street, where Fedor's property was located. The big field, before you get to the big Y, the huge, huge, the huge field. So we worked on that. We worked on the 60 units, as I said, for the three school buildings. And we're also talking, I'm not sure where the plans exactly are for the former Tasty Top property, but there are over 200 units. So I'm sure some of them are going to be affordable. I heard talk that all of them were going to be affordable. Is that a possibility? I don't... But anyway, another number. So we're adding lots of housing. I don't think any of them are SROs. I think they are all one, two, or three-bedroom mix. So I didn't want to leave out a whole group of people. That being said, I defer to my other counselors.
Counselor Denham?
Um, when I, thank you, Mr. President. When I was in the meeting, the finance meeting, one of the questions that I asked Senior Planner Webb was if we don't do anything, and I think this is alluding to Counselor Zerret's question, that property is just going to continue to dilapidate, right? And I don't think that that's something that we want for that particular neighborhood either, right? I think there becomes a whole lot of safety concerns, a whole, a number of issues and things like that. And so, again, if I understood the conversation and I understand what Counselor Peak is saying right now, this is just to be able to figure out what can be done, right? Is it a museum? Like, I'm open to that. Is it affordable housing? I'm not opposed to that. But I think we're just trying to figure out what can be done with the property. And if we don't do anything, it's just going to continue to fall apart. And I think that that's, for me, that's concerning, right? Like, I don't, I don't want people in the neighborhood to have a structure that is dilapidating and could be potentially harmful for children and things like that who are curious and like to explore and things like that. I have been inside the building recently, since the new year. I have been in there. It's a mess, right? It needs, it needs a lot of work. There's a lot. And if I understand, to rehab this, it's going to cost over $1 million, right? And I don't think that we, we don't have that kind of funds lying around to be able to do that, right? So I think right now, we're just trying to figure out how to move forward. And this unfortunately has to be the first step, regardless of whatever direction or choice we make.
Counselor Zerret?
Yeah, so to reinforce basically what Counselor Denham was just saying, there's been some due diligence around this already in terms of assessing the structural integrity of the building. It's in really bad shape. And, I mean, I can't say that it's going to fall over tomorrow, but I think that it's concerning enough that some, that some sort of decision needs to be made soon. I do appreciate that Counselor Kozinski always will offer some really good questions about, around topics like this and make us think so as to not just basically go down a path of essentially, for lack of a better term, rubber-stamping something, which I don't think is what we're doing here. Again, there is affordable housing. There's a deed restriction. Whatever we, every day that we're not providing, I believe it's 23 units of affordable housing out of that space, we're in violation. And all it takes is for someone to catch up with that fact. Again, the Counselor Denham's point also, and the Counselor Peak's point, this happens a lot on the council. This is not a shovel in the ground. It's actually trying to determine if we can put a shovel in the ground. And so... And so we can't even get to the conversation of the what ifs and what abouts and wherefores and how many units if we don't do this first. So I think this is a necessary step really for anything to happen.
Councilor Peak and then Councilor Terrell.
I just wanted to reiterate from this, because there is one detail that Councilor Denham reminded me of that I did not mention. It is in the memo, however. So what exactly will these funds be used for? The first part is the survey will, there's going to be a survey that consists of field investigations involving 45 test pits for subsurface testing, for proposed project impacts, artifact collection, field documentation, including GPS data, I had mentioned that, a written report and photographs. And this is the part I had neglected to mention, so I do apologize for that. The CPA funding will also be used to do necessary building preservation activities over the next few years so that the structure remains stable until the renovation work can begin in earnest and for hiring, for the hiring of a surveyor to research, survey and monument the boundaries of the buildable area, the parcel. So that is true, that there is, part of this funding is to dig the test pits. Part of this is to demarcate the borders and do the GPS stuff. Part of this funding is to just weatherize and preserve this building so that doesn't degrade further while we're having these conversations, which I think is valuable.
Councilor Terrell?
I just wanted to echo what Councilor Zerat had said. I was also at the finance meeting and asked Planner Webb very specifically what the, excuse me, what this meant. And this is, like Councilor Peak said, purely for viability options, to see what is available there.
Lindsey, can you please mute yourself?
Well, it's just, oh, because it's flu or break.
Lindsey, can you? I'll do it. All right.
So this is, and I asked her very, Planner Webb at the finance meeting very specifically, this is purely for testing the viability of the property. Not to approve this particular CDC project, but this is to test the property through the test pits and other tests to see exactly what can be done, if anything, there. Like I said, I was very specific with that because I did not want to move forward approving something that I was unsure of, but this is purely for the testing of the viability of the property. So I just wanted to echo that, what Councilor Zerat and Councilor Peak said.
Councilor Smith?
Okay, so I'm seeing that this was built in 1890. And if this was a previous poorhouse, my understanding is poorhouses, for those younger than me, were precursors to any federal government support for people who were in poverty. So it's odd to me to imagine that this, that has such a negative stigma associated with it. It's hard to imagine now this being affordable housing. Like, it used to be really stigmatized, but now we've made it, that rubs me the wrong way, but I guess that's for later. The other part is that when I was in sixth grade, absolute life-changing experience was to be able to go to an archaeological dig of a farm site in the city that I grew up in. And it was very similar to this and the artifacts that sixth graders were able to find, just as, you know, I'm sure the bottles that were thrown down the road, some of those would be found on this property. So I think it's also a really great educational opportunity if we do do an archaeological dig. The other part of that, that I started to think about, and I admit this may be really going down the road here, but what happened to people who died who were in the poorhouse in 1890? Was there yet an actual cemetery, like, demand that people had to be buried in the cemetery? Or is it possible that this archaeological dig could end up finding a whole cemetery that's so far uncovered?
Yeah. Councilor Peak?
If we were to find that, that would throw a big wrench into a lot of things. And that's one of the big reasons why this is legally necessary is to determine that there are not any human remains that we would be building things on and, you know, potentially initiating some sort of horror movie scenario.
I was going to say that might put a dent in the kids.
We've all seen how that goes.
But, yeah.
Councilor Smith, do you have any other questions?
No, those were my comments. I mean, just really thinking about it from an historical perspective, while I understand upholding the historical preservation of it, it's also an interesting thing to uphold compared to a lot of the other areas in town that are marks of celebrations in the past. And this one is a very sad thing, sad building. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'm going to open to the public and then Councilors will have another chance to make a comment or more questions after the public. Now, for the public, you will have three minutes. Mayor, do you want to go first?
Yes, please. Only to correct the record on several points that were brought up. I do take the position of Councilor Terrell, as far as the CPA, those were really direct questions about what this was about. Architectural, I mean archaeological site, I can't even say the word, actually is exactly for what Councilor Smith asked. The possibility of indigenous remains in that part of the city around that poorhouse would not be surprising. And that could happen even before there was a poorhouse, when you look at the maps of what was in East Hampton. Not for good or for bad, but we saw what happened in North Hampton. And it killed the project because they did not do that first. The request, actually, the council has already approved $100,000 for this project and not for pre-site development. And the ask before the council is to take that $1,000 that was going to be a local match for the CDC project, that was, the grant was not awarded, and we're asking for a transfer in use to this pre, pre-site work, pre-development work. This work, this type of work, we have done on the school project, the reuse of the school project, we've done it on Ferry Street, and we did a little tiny bit of it out on Main Street where the Kestrel project is. So this is not unusual for us to do. One, it makes the property more viable, including for the city, for what we want to do next because we know what we're dealing with. The property units that are being proposed would basically be brand new. And additional units are, will be built on the footprint. And I just, I don't want to, the CDC project is extremely volatile and unsure right now because of a whole bunch of things. And one of the biggest things is, it cannot be a museum. This is on the Federal Historical Register for Housing, and it has to be all affordable. And so when we do these, if the city were to do these units over, the type of paint, the type of wood, the type of crown molding, if thing, we, a porch was falling off of this building and it would have been over $50,000 to replace it and meet the Federal Historic qualifications, never mind the process, to get that approved. To go one step back, when we signed the contract with SMOC, their responsibility for the property was limited to material items. It was the city itself who did not invest any capital. And we breached the contract that we signed years ago to keep up the capital assets of this project. So the uninhabitable conditions that you see today, and really you saw when SMOC said we have to move people, was because of the city's inability, you know, I don't want, but because of that lack of capital investment. And then also the city, and this is the concept of stewardship, very purposefully put all these restrictions on this property for a reason that was well-vetted by, by the public and the council at the time. And, you know, so I just, you know, that historical property and, you know, the number of affordable housing units in our pipeline, I would just remind folks of the Ferry Street project, which you graciously approved, and I had to come back and say, I don't think we're, this is not going to have affordable housing because it was so volatile on the meeting. And then we come back again and we've got 96 units. Hopefully that goes through. But we will wait at least three years to get the credits for that developer to work on the Ferry Street project. I cannot imagine how many years and how many rounds of historical tax credits the city will go through if we continue to own it before anything happens. It's an attractive nuisance and we have direct liability. We need to know what we're, we're dealing with. The project be, you know, I think it's, the city included, as well as Valley CDC, has really, it is such a questionable project. I don't know where the money goes. But I do want to say, I just wanted to correct the record on the restrictions and it's built on a footprint. But again, this study that we're doing, oh, also, doing this gives the city an opportunity to legally and clearly define what is over 50 acres of agricultural land that's also preserved and push, and separate that for what potentially could be the, another lodging house or whatever it takes. And, and I would say that this is a unique opportunity for the city to be able to do that with the agricultural land because we do not have a clear ordinance around preserving land specifically for agriculture. And this is a huge step forward for that ability in a very rich farm, farming and agricultural activity. So I, that's all, it's not a pro or a con, I just, to correct the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm going to open to the public. We'll give you three minutes to talk about these particular issues. Can you please?
Go first. My name is Ellen Dismaris.
Just one second, one second. You can make questions. We're going to take notes and we're going to answer the questions after everybody spoke. Okay?
You want me to sit down?
No, no, no.
Oh.
Now you, can you please state your name and address?
My name is Ellen Dismaris. I live at, I live at 134 Oliver Street. I've been there for 51 years, probably longer than anybody on the street except for the Chickwens, who are my neighbors. I was fortunate enough to know Henry Chickwin, who had farmed that land for a very long time. He told me a lot about the history. For instance, did anybody know there was a pest farm right next to my property? The old foundation is still there. It's where they put poor people who were sick to die. Where are they buried? Where are they buried? Now, I've been told that a lot of poor people were buried on the property of what they called the poor farm. When I lived there, it became known as the town farm. And it was the town farm because the poor people who lived there had a huge farm. They had a purpose in their life. They were able to farm, they were able to grow their own food. And a lot of the residents were there for many, many years. They would walk down the street, we would stop and talk with them. I'm not saying they were all good, but there were a lot of good people there. My property was once beautiful. It still is my property. But what happened? The town put the dump across the street from me. And how many years did I put up with that dump? People speeding down the road, trash flying everywhere, nobody cared, nobody picked it up. When the dump closed, people still dumped their trash, only on my property. So that was one thing I put up with. Then they wanted to put a shooting range there. Well, I fought that, that didn't go. Then came the dog park. I love dogs. I've had, I have five, I've had 13, I do foster. But I don't want dogs running all over my property. And not only that, the vandalism, I mean, what next for Oliver Street? Now it's affordable housing. Well, what does that mean? Affordable housing? Please don't call me racist because I'm not. But times are very serious right now and I don't doubt for a minute that illegal immigrants will be put in this housing who we know nothing about their backgrounds. I guarantee it. I don't care if you believe it or not, and I am not racist. I've lived here my whole life, 75 years. I didn't, did I go over my two minutes?
Thirty seconds.
Now, okay, now I know the mayor just got appointed to a nice position of finding housing and everything for people. Well, and now all of a sudden Oliver Street comes up. So what's going on here? My husband is a Vietnam vet, wounded in action. What about our veterans? Couldn't something be done on this property to help our veterans, to make them feel they have a purpose and that what they did wasn't in vain? Is that not a consideration?
Thank you.
I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Avery LaValle, 90 Oliver Street. I just wanted to say, first off, real quick, kudos to Mr. Riley for suggesting the museum idea. Whether or not it could float or not, it's one of the best idea I've heard all night. It was a poor farm, it was also a farm. The, you know how many trends there are of tiny homes and affordable homes and small houses and efficient homes going on today? Everybody my age and lower loves the idea of living efficiently and effectively, loved, how many kids these days talk about, we should all get some land together and move away off grid and do some, do something. You know how many people in this town would chomp at the bit for that opportunity at that site? Now, I got to talk fast because I've only got three minutes, but you bet your bottom dollar there are bodies out there. I was told by Mr. Chickwin, I was told by Mr. York, I was told by Mr. Breaky, I've been told by everybody who lived out there, all the old timers, most of them are dead now. There are bodies out there. You'll find them. If you want to spend a bunch more money to find them, you'll find them. But you could spend the money on the property itself. You could spend the money to fix up the property, any dollars that you have. There are people in this community, myself included, that for years before the CDC even had the property rights or whatever they had, I've contacted the town and said, will you let me go over there and mow the grass and pick up the sticks? It's an eyesore. I'll do it for free. Do I got to form an LLC and then offer to do it for free? I'll do it for free. I live next door. I love the place. I grew up there. I used to go to movie nights with the Badistonis, play Freeze Tag in the Dark with the foster kids that stayed there. I've been in there more time than any of all three of you put together times 10. I've been in there, I've lived in there, I've loved that place. I've also hated it for other reasons. But it deserves to be preserved, yes, but don't spend any more money trying to figure out what next rich person can come in there and make some money off of it. You say it's a not-for-profit, but cramming in another 120 people in one section of Oliver Street? Come on. Somebody's going to profit off it and it's not going to be the people who live on Oliver Street right there. Not at all. But meanwhile, there are people like me, a lot of us, that are tradesmen, skilled craftspeople. We're not, you know, state certified, but I would go in there and bust out all that plumbing in a, in a couple of months with no charge, with my ProPress in hand, and then walk 10 feet down the road to my bed at night to be finished. And I would find 100 people in town that would help me do it for not a penny because we would love it and we would come together as a community. And it would be something that would make the people that originated that poor farm for its original uses proud for what it was being used for. Not for a company to come in and pump out a bunch more new units for a bunch more tax paying, for whatever reason. I'm sorry, I'm on a tangent there, it doesn't matter. The point of the matter is, it doesn't need another 120 people in there. It needs some people that care about it, that are right there, that have been willing and waiting from the beginning to take care of it. And we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chris Strazdell, live on Caroline Circle, born and raised on Concord Drive. As with him, I've lived there for 40 years now. I've seen that place, been in there as a child, the whole bit. I have a question for the council. Do you guys know how big the parcel of land is that this current building resides on? Has anybody besides Mr. Kozinski walked it, seen it with their own eyes? Because 30 units on, I would call it maybe two acres of land is a little, little bit of congestion and you're going to, what, just pave the whole thing? Because that's about all you're going to be left with. Along with the fact that you have no infrastructure, no sidewalks, there's barely any streetlights on Oliver Street, like he was saying, people walking up and down the road. What's going to happen when someone gets hit? It seems to me like this money's being appropriated already, which is fine, whatever you guys want to do. But you guys seem, it seems to me like you guys have it in your minds already that it's going to be something. Whether it's housing or something, which looks to be housing, is, you know, a little crazy with the amount of, how many affordable units do you guys have coming into town right now in the other two projects? 300, 300 units, let's say? That's 900 people, 1,000 people, 1,000 more cars? You guys realize like, this is a small town, right? We're not Springfield, we're not Holyoke, we're a very small community. That's all, these extra people in school, everything. And I think it should just be left alone because as far as I'm concerned, everyone knows it's there, no one really goes near it, everybody knows about it, and it's looked the same for about 30 years. So someone's going to come in, take it over, and in 30 years... it's probably going to look like it does now. I'm against it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Broder on 72 Oliver Street. So it's directly across the street from 75. I have a couple of questions as far as you said you were going to answer later. If, if it's left like it is and the preservation, you find out you can't do the projects that you want to do, is it going to be demolished? If it can't be, it has to, we're not naive enough to think that something isn't going to go there or something isn't going to happen to it. So that would be one thing, you know? Is that a possibility? Because if you can't do anything with it, because of the historical things and everything. Also, how did it get to be in the shape that it is? If the city owns it, how dare they let it get so dilapidated? You know, hand it over to someone else that's not managing it properly and then just leave it to the, like you said, the porch is falling off, this and that. And I know the other things and the issues. I made friends with people that lived there. I love, I love the person with the ducks and how nice it was and stuff. I enjoyed that very much and I miss that. But also, we had some poor souls that were walking staggering. I picked them off the street. Did I get hit before from that unit? That no one's managing. You put people there and for mental health reasons or societal issues, but no one's helping them. There's not somebody, they're coming in drunk, they're this and that. And the poor guy, I think he's dead, actually. Probably people know who I'm talking about, walking around. So to not use up too much of my time, I'm going to read this. I'll read this because I would say this, because I said this, I wrote this. "We're concerned, we believe that this will lead to decreased safety, decreased property values, and decreased sense of peace and tranquility. Of equal importance is the preservation of our rare surrounding ever decreasing natural habitat. Speeding is already detrimental to those of us who peacefully attempt to walk our dogs, ride bikes, or just try to have a leisurely walk for our health benefit. Oliver Street is inundated with speeders throughout all hours of the work week along with the brush pile traffic on weekends. That includes the big old trucks that bring all their stuff. There's constantly huge trucks flying down there that are going to smash children." So it can't possibly handle the increase of a multi-unit housing development, which would involve increased resident visitor traffic, but also increased delivery and transport vehicles. Oliver Street has had numerous vehicle-to-pole and vehicle-to-tree impacts in recent years due to speeding and intoxicated drivers. We have nip bottles in our yard and beer cans left and right on that street. As it is now, since adherence to speed limits has not been enforced, we need deterrents such as speed tables. I know people don't like those, but we have nothing else that's stopping that flow and those can be used with snowplows. It has been a disgrace and an embarrassment to our resident taxpayers over the years that this historical property has been allowed to slip into such disrepair under the management of an outside agency without intervention and supervision of our city officials. What would happen with a new, larger product? This property is entirely inappropriate for a multi-unit housing development for reasons stated, while also importantly because it is not even centrally located to services such as retail, social, and medical needs. We were under the impression that the abandoned city schools would be more appropriate for this use.
Thank you.
These reasons alone mean increased cost to taxpayers, road repairs, and sidewalks. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Ami Ross, 28 Oliver Street. I bought my house 10 years ago. I was very fortunate in an accident, that's not the fortunate part, but I was able to put money down on this house and purchase it. And I still drive up to it and say, oh my goddess, this is my house. I have security. And I'm grateful for where I live, in the community that I live in, and specifically the area I live in. And I support housing. And I know, I talked to Jamie Webb of Planning about this project and I asked about Papa Graves. And I hear everybody worried, but we have like six other affordable housing units already constructed in our area. And if we don't use our affordable housing points, for lack of a better word, units, we will lose the money for it. I'm pretty sure this plan will take five to seven years to happen. And the building, with respect to everybody who's rummaged around in it and been in it, it's 20 units and the plan right now is 12 units that would be studios because they would be encapsulating bathrooms and kitchenettes for everybody. And then the extended building would be 12 to 18 units and they would be one to three bedrooms. And it would allow people who are totally, how do you say? Growing community here, people are moving here for all sorts of reasons, including why we still live here. And so I do support it and I think it's pretty normal to have growing pains and concerns. And I also think that we need to allow people room to grow and come to this with some compassion for those who are seeking affordable and all the units have to be affordable from what I understand, as the mayor pointed out. And I, at this point, don't think there's such thing as too much affordable housing, which is like supposed to be no more than 30% of your income. So I support housing.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
I'd just like to ask one more question. I don't need to talk. I just...
You have to go to the podium.
Just one question, since the council's answering questions. I just want one benefit of putting a 30-unit complex in the middle of a farm at the end of a very quiet country road, very far away from town. Just one benefit to the taxpayers.
Anyone else? Can you please go to the podium?
And I say, my house has been broken into seven times. Putting affordable housing, like they said, in the middle of farmland, are we going to get more police? Everyone seems to be against them now. Who's going to patrol the area? Who's going to stop this? Who's going to keep them off our property? I've let the police use my driveway for surveillance to stop the drug deals that are going on up the street right by the solar panels. There is a lot of drug activity on that street. It has to stop somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to... I just, if, all these questions are great. I, I, I'm going to tell you that it's going to be a public hearing for Development Community Block Grand. They're going to talk about, especially about why you guys are talking. That is going to, they're going to have a public hearing and that is going to be March 4, 5:00 PM. And the residents are encouraged to attend. That's where they're going to discuss the money and what they're going to do there. Because what we're doing today is something totally different about it. It's March 4th, it's at 5:00 PM. They have a Google link, you can participate remote. It is, it's a virtual meeting, it's through internet. So if you go to the website, it's not our meeting. I'm just, I'm just making an announcement. They have a meeting, about $950,000 for that particular project, if it happens. So if you have a concern or questions about that particular issue, they have a public hearing again, March 4th, at 5:00 PM. And I need to make a comment. The people who live in affordable housing are no bad people. Counselors, anyone, Councilor Riley?
So, you know, I just wanted to thank all of you for coming out and speaking about this. As somebody that has lived in East Hampton for less than 20 years, there's a lot of knowledge about the land that I don't know. So to share that enriches my experience as a city councilor and helps me make better decisions. So I wanted to thank you for at least educating us on a part of the history of this land. Something that, you know, when the conversation first started, I wasn't sure so much about the funding. But it seems like what I've been hearing is there's a lot of generational trauma that occurred on this property. And I think that the funding of this property, were we to find what some of you all are suggesting are there, I think that those people deserve to have a dignified burial and to have a final resting place that is respectful. And I at least want to determine if that does in fact exist because I would hope that if something like this happened to me 100 years ago, that people today would look back and say, no, he deserves to have respect in his final resting place. So, you know, I want to say that I'm, I'm still cautious about the final outcome of this project, but I'm going to vote yes tonight because I think we need to at least start that process out of respect for all of the people that have lived on this property over the last 100 years. So please continue to advocate, it's really important. There's a lot of you here that I haven't seen at meetings before, so I wanted to thank you for coming, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any councilor to roll?
I just want to be clear, I think we got a little off course a little bit. Like I stated earlier, I'm in support of this. I'm not necessarily in support of affordable housing per se. I'm in support of this particular instance of researching the viability of the land. I happen to live in Precinct One, I live off of Oliver Street on Lawler Drive. I'm fairly familiar with the area. I did grow up in town, not as familiar as some people are who grew up closer to this. But I think we need to do it justice and investigate it because something needs to be done. You know, yes, it is Valley CDC that prompted this procedure of investigating the land, but regardless, people don't want it just to sit to go disrepair, something needs to be done. Regardless of what is done, something needs to be done. And in my opinion, this is the first step in doing so. You know, everybody wants progress, but nobody wants change. I grew up on Everett Street, where as a kid I used to go down and feed the cows down the end of the street. That's now housing down the end of the street now. Do I have fond memories of it? Yes. Was the housing a good step for the city? Yes, it was, I believe. So like I said, I do think it needs to start here. And I'm not voting tonight in support of affordable housing. I'm voting in support of getting this process rolling to see what can be done with this property that is not being used for anything right now. Thank you.
Any other councilor? Counselor Saric?
Just a point of, question of clarification, Mr. President. So the meeting on March 4th, does the city have any capacity for meetings like that where the public's come out with expressed interest to offer some sort of room to participate in a group?
I would get, that's a great question. And I guess that answer is through the mayor's office. They call the mayor's office because at the end of the day, the planning department and every single department responds to the mayor. I think that's where they should go. Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I think similar to other folks, you know, I want to acknowledge, I've heard the things that people have said today. I recognize that there is a long history there at this particular piece of land. There's a lot of historical significance there that I think that we don't know, that we're trying to figure out. And I think one of the things that I heard from folks was, why wasn't this taken care of? Like, people shirked on their responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera. And now, I've only been here for two years, right? And I want to correct the problem, right? And I think correcting the problem at this point is making sure that, at this point, we do what is needed to be done to that particular property, to get it in some sort of preservable state so that decisions moving forward can be made, right? And so I'm supporting this for the same reasons that everybody has mentioned. And also just echoing President Gomez's comments, you know? As someone who grew up in poverty, I don't judge people by their housing situation. So I just want to name that.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Kuzinski?
I do appreciate, I want to thank everybody for being here and for participating, those who participated and those who were in here in support. And those who are in support of affordable housing. I am in favor of affordable housing, as evidenced by every single vote I've taken in favor of the projects I've mentioned. And that's over 250 units and more. I, my concern is that we really ought to have a defined plan and an idea and not go to a meeting and say, well, you know, this is only about an archaeological study. I've seen too many times on this council where a project is taken piecemeal. You bite off this little part here, but we're not doing this. And then that gets approved and now you bite off this piece. And eventually, you get to the end and this is the real goal and this is what you have. I have some problems with the goal because a project like this, being a mile and a half from the center of town, is not the right location. It doesn't provide... It doesn't provide for the care and the, and the, and the, I think the interaction that you'd have if you were more centrally located and the people who would oversee the project. And I think there'd also be a proximity to other affordable housing locations that not while on top of each other, were close enough to participate with one another. And that kind of makes sense to me. So I have a kind of a philosophical problem. In addition to the practical problem of, well, now you got to build an infrastructure, as was mentioned, will it take the sewer and water? Will it take the, do you have to build sidewalks all the way to West Street? What's that going to, is that part of this expense? Definitely be an improvement for the neighborhood, I agree. Walking Oliver Street? Sorry, folks, I don't walk it anymore. I used to walk Oliver Street on a regular basis. My family did, our friends did. It got, it got a little, it got, it got a little, little rough with the traffic and the speed, et cetera. So to think that we're going to have 72 people, probably, I think I mentioned that figure before, as the number of people plus the, oh, it's 72 plus the however many in the building, that gets almost to 100 people. Where I think the neighborhood is very accepting and encouraging and adaptable to there being 15 to 18 units. That's what they had before, that's what they bought in, that's what they'd like to see. And I think that is our commitment to affordable housing, not only as a city, but as a neighborhood. So my vote is going to be where it stands.
Any other counselors? Anyone else? Counselor Peak?
Mr. President, I will make the, this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriations. Amount requested, $100,000 to be appropriated from CPA reserved for affordable housing, $100,000 to be appropriated to Town Lodging House, $100,000. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funding for pre-development activity to rehabilitate, support, and create affordable housing at the Town Lodging House. Second?
I have a motion and a second for the CPA supplemental appropriation of $100,000 for the Town Lodging House development activity to support and create affordable housing. Any further discussion? Counselor Saric?
Just a quick question, mostly to inform the public too, Mr. President. Did, I think you mentioned this, is there a timeline for all this to occur now? Do we have an estimate how long this process is going to take?
Counselor Peak? I can get you that information, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay.
Any other counselor? For those one in favor?
I.
He is out. For those one in favor?
I.
Any against? Abstention?
No.
Motion passes when one, no.
Seven to one?
Yep, seven to one. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? See you now. For those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
If I could have that back down.
Yep. Can you have that?
Thanks.
Communication for elected officials, boards and committees. Um, any counselor have anything for tonight? See none? With the end of meeting, please be silent. Thank you. Mayor's communication. Madam Mayor?
No.
Thank you. Correspondents' announcement for the President and Vice President. I don't have anything for tonight. Uh, report of standing committee, finance. Counselor Peak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we met last week to discuss the item that we just discussed. Uh, and uh, that was the only appropriate, we don't have any new appropriations. I, I, we will, I think, meet, uh, if it's okay with everybody, uh, next, next week to go over the rest of our items, the review with the auditor and the review of salaries uh, for elected officials and appointed committees. But uh, I think that's all we will have to discuss, but it's nice to actually have a meeting where we can dig into that stuff. So uh, that will be at uh, 5:30 in conference room one, and thus concludes.
Thank you. Counselor Peak, police safety, Counselor Sarat?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since our last meeting, but we are meeting next Tuesday, uh, the 27th of February at 6:00 PM in room one. Uh, we will have the um, quarterly report from the fire department. I think we'll start reviewing uh, the amendments to traffic rules and order appendix A, um, the parking prohibited in certain streets and changes to amounts charged for parking violations. Thank you for those who put that forward. Um, and thus concludes.
Thank you. Appointments, Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I do my report out, can I, uh, in the form of a motion, get a 90-day extension for a request to review processes for the mayor and city council appointments?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend that particular item for 90 days. Any further discussion? See you now. For those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So the appointment committee last met uh, this Tuesday, so yesterday, um, to discuss a series of mayoral appointments. Um, first, we considered the appointment of Brian Moody to the licensing board. Um, for the public record, uh, eligibility to be appointed to the licensing board has various criteria set forth by state law. So specifically Massachusetts general law, chapter 138, section four, which considers licensing board appointments and membership states that the board must consist of three persons who shall not be engaged directly or indirectly in the manufacture or sale of alcoholic beverages, who have been residents of the city where they are appointed for at least two years. Also, that one member shall be appointed from each of the two leading political parties and the third may also be appointed from one of said parties. So Mr. Moody is a registered independent and when he was put forward as an appointee, there was language in that law that suggested, um, when it said, quote, "And the third member may also be appointed from one of the said parties." Left possibility that a third person could be from a different political affiliation other than a Democrat or Republican. Um, we didn't vet that language at the state level. Um, and were that even the case, the licensing board needs one Republican and one Democrat before it can authorize any licenses. So were Mr. Moody to be appointed, we'd have a Republican and an independent, which means that the licensing board would be violating state law. So before I proceed with a motion to withdraw, do any of the counselors have any questions about that specific scenario?
Any counselor have any question? Counselor Peak?
Not so much a question, and I hate to be the guy who says less of a question than a comment, but as a unenrolled voter, I just have to say, I find this system so unbelievably offensive and stupid. And it's not your choice or the choice of anyone in this room, but if, I, I just, I can't believe that we have this antiquated and ridiculous system and it's uh, the fact that 65% of our registered voters are not able to join this committee because they're unenrolled is 65, that's a couple of years old, but I checked a few years back. It's just so preposterously offensive and awful and everyone on Beacon Hill should feel unbelievably embarrassed that this is still the case. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, and I agree.
Second, oh, I'm sorry, that was not a motion.
Counselor Riley?
Yeah, understood. That, that's where the, the, the challenge comes into play. Um, we have before us a series of licenses that need to be reviewed and approved this summer in order for our summer economic planning to occur. The idea that we could even petition the state to fix that is a years-long process. So this is just unfortunately what we're stuck with.
You do?
Good? Okay. Um, all right. So um, I move to withdraw Mr. Moody's appointment to the licensing board without prejudice.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove without prejudice this appointment. Any further discussion? See you now. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and then next on our agenda, we had Lindsay Rothschild to be appointed to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. Um, so before we begin, um, please let the record reflect, um, that there were multiple concerns that were raised with me specifically about the appearance of a conflict of interest between Ms. Rothschild's role as a real estate agent selling the 413 Pub owned by uh, Christian LaChapelle, who is the brother of Mayor LaChapelle. So in 2018, Mayor LaChapelle and her brother purchased the 413 Pub formerly known as Casey's Big Dog Saloon. Records suggest the property is owned by, quote, "Old Jarvis LLC," which is solely owned by Christian LaChapelle. This is his business. Um, it's not clear to me whether the mayor would receive any financial reimbursement for her initial investment to purchase. However, Old Jarvis LLC is a business owned by, per MGMT Incorporated, uh, which is a registered corporation where Mayor LaChapelle is a shareholder, registered agent and secretary. Um, so I did a little bit of investigating and I found the ethics evaluation that was done on uh, Mayor LaChapelle when she was running for office and how this kind of concurrently fits within um, uh, within the confines of whether or not you can be a business owner in East Hampton and you can also be in elected office. So uh, the ethics report stated, quote, "LaChapelle must recuse herself where there is an appearance of conflict unless she gets an exemption from the state. An appearance of conflict arises when it would be reasonable to conclude after knowing all the facts that her relationship to or acquaintance with an individual or entity could improperly influence her in performing her official duties." So I reached out to the mayor's office multiple times over the last two weeks requesting an ethics review and an exemption to ensure that no real or perceived conflicts of interest existed or whether she would have to recuse herself from this appointment. The record should reflect that the mayor did not respond to any of those requests and to my knowledge, the mayor would still need to receive that exemption, but without her cooperation, I cannot ascertain whether she must uh, recuse herself. So then the question became, let's ask uh, Ms. Rothschild to engage in that process. Um, and she did. Um, she participated in her own ethics evaluation and the state determined that her role as a real estate agent selling this property would not disqualify her from being appointed. So to be clear, I provide this information for the sake of transparency and accountability on behalf of the public and to ensure that I have done what due diligence is afforded to me as the chair of the appointments committee. While the question of who should be able to appoint Ms. Rothschild uh, still exists, it does not affect her ability to be appointed to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. I also want to note, um, that committee members received two letters of recommendation from Janet Tetro and Jackie Brusso Pereira, two longstanding pillars of the East Hampton community, uh, East Hampton's housing community. So, you know, as in all other instances that have come before the council, when the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership Chair advocates for membership proposals or positions before the city, I always listen to her because she consistently does what is best for the housing policies and poverty alleviation uh, for our residents. So I trust her judgment and I, I respect her request. Though the committee did ask pointed questions about Ms. Rothschild's appointment, we did ultimately decide three to zero to recommend her appointment. So again, with this scenario, before I make a motion, I'm open to answering questions about that process.
Any counselor have any questions? See none? Counselor Riley?
Okay, thank you. Um, I move to appoint Lindsay Rothschild to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with a term expiration date of December 31st, uh, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to, for the appointment of Lindsay Rothschild for the Affordable and Fair Housing. Any further discussion? Counselor Kucinski?
Uh, I would like to thank Counselor Riley for his diligent work in thoroughly reviewing this matter and for his clear explanation to the public about where, what the issues are and to this council. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? For those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention, motion passing, one abstention. Counselor Riley?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so next what I'm gonna do is just give a brief overview of the remaining appointees and uh, if there's no objection, I'll make a single motion for those folks at the end. So uh, the, the committee met with Marie Ferraro and Catherine Carey. Uh, they are two mayoral appointees to the Council on Aging. Um, also for clarification, chapter two, article three, division three, section two dash 51A, um, of our ordinances states that all appointees to the Council on Aging must be, quote, "from the voters and residents of the city." Both of the appointees attested that they were residing in East Hampton and also registered voters in East Hampton. So that threshold has been cleared. Marie discussed, uh, the, you know, numerous challenges of overcoming social isolation during the pandemic, um, and also celebrated some of the recent programmatic achievements at the Council on Aging and wants to continue that work. She also expressed experience in architectural design, excuse me, which can lend additional insights into the ad hoc committee, uh, to find a new Council on Aging location. Catherine is a longtime service user of the Council on Aging programming and has experiential insights that are invaluable to the council's programming and oversight. Also, as someone who identified as having a vision impairment, she understands how the layouts of new offices, uh, areas, uh, and, and other facilities could be designed to be more safe and more accessible for people with mobility issues and other disabilities. Uh, and important to note, she and Marie were both recommended by Cynthia Terrell, who is the council director. So then next we had Bruce Homsted. Uh, I do want to correct the previous record. His last name is spelled H-O-M-S-T-E-A-D. Um, so he is an appointee to the Commission on Disability with a referral from longstanding member Stan Diamond. Uh, so though Bruce could not attend the meeting, um, I invoked a longstanding exception that I have for appointees to either the Commission on Disability, Council on Aging and the Veterans Council. And the reason why I do that is that it can be very likely that the thing that makes them qualified to be advocates on these issues could also be the barrier that prevents them from engaging in the political process. So, you know, whether that's that they cannot attend for, you know, the physical impairments, maybe it's the, the time of evening that the meetings are held, transportation challenges, it, you know, and I don't feel that it is my responsibility or I don't think that it's appropriate for these committees to ask them why it is that they cannot meet those accommodations. Just doesn't feel fair. Um, and then finally, we met with Desiree Gribby and Jishva Patel, who are up for appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Both appointees talked in great detail about ways to streamline the organization and programming um, for ease of access of information, um, potentially opening the parks in the winter for winter-specific programming and increased revenue, and then various ways of incorporating cultural celebrations, programming for senior citizens, and even so far to explore um, programming in our parks for uh, people with uh, neurodiversity requirements. It was honestly, all of these folks, we had really great conversations, um, and the committee overwhelmingly supported them. It was a three-zero vote. Um, so unless there's any concerns or questions, I'd like to just make one final motion for all of those people.
Does Counselor have any questions about any of the appointees?
Just a comment, if that's okay, Mr. President. I just want to say, um, and no disrespect to my current colleague, who was previously on the commission, but uh, um, I'm really happy to see that the composition of the commission is demonstrating a lot more gender equity as well as, um, F, uh, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate term, ethnic or racial equity as well.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't get to mention this last time, but um, uh, I did get the opportunity to talk to the, the previous most recent applicant and I also, I was able to talk to uh, Mrs. Gribby. I did not get to talk to Ms. Patel, but what I do appreciate also is um, a vision to the future for the park in terms of looking at how else can we make this, this really central and important area even better? Um, not that it wasn't good before, but, but how, how can we make it more inclusive? What else could we be doing with it? I really appreciated uh, Mrs. Gribby's um, thoughts about trying to see if the Parks Department could actually become a larger umbrella for some sports teams and coordinate those better. I don't know how that all works, but I think it's, it just shows some innovative thinking. I know that she's been involved with pretty much almost every single youth sport in the city. Um, so it's, it's just, it's, it's exciting to see um, uh, that the, the legacy that my former colleague left with his great work on the commission is being extended now uh, in ways that are, are more equitable and continue forward thinking. So that's all.
Thank you. Any other counselor? Counselor Riley?
Um, so I move to appoint Marie Ferraro to the Council on Aging with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. Catherine Carey to the Council on Aging with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025. Bruce Homsted to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. And Desiree Gribby and Jishva Patel to the Parks and Rec Commission, both with term expiration dates of December 31st, 2026.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds for those five appointments. Any, uh, any further discussion? See none? Uh, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
All right. I'm like so tired of talking, but I just, so the last uh, thing that I need to announce um, for everyone on the council to know, um, I am now in office of two people. I hired an intern. Um, I know that most of you know who Evan LeBeau is. He is a longstanding supporter of politics in East Hampton. Um, he's going to be joining me on the um, on the appointment committee's work to improve the process improvement plan that we have in place. So the ultimate goal here by the end of the summer is to create a manual or a guidebook for everyone within the city to understand all of the policies and laws that guide appointments, what all the criteria are for each specific position and to lay out the foundation when I am no longer here, because that is a definite when, um, that I can hand this off to the next chair and I, uh, there won't be as much of a bumpy onboarding process as it was for me to, to just come in brand new and try to sort this all out. So that's the goal. Um, so he's going to be joining me at appointment committee meetings. Welcome him, please. He's, he's a really wonderful person. Um, so our next appointment committee meeting will be on Monday, March 4th at 6:00 PM, uh, right here in conference room two? Yes. Uh, conference room two, right behind city council chambers. Thus concludes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Orders, Counselor Denham?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the committee hasn't met since our last meeting, but we do have a joint meeting with the um, planning board on February 27th at 6:00 PM to discuss the amendments to the electronic message center sign. Um, ordinance, um, so we, I'm assuming we're gonna meet in these chambers. That wasn't provided to me, but um, um, yeah, so I think the other thing that I have to do, I think I have to extend the date. Um, and I'm assuming 30 days would be enough time for that. that. I'd go longer.
Sixty?
Sixty days?
Sixty, yeah.
Just, I didn't do the math, but I think that takes us to April.
Sixty would be good.
Huh?
Sixty would be good.
Okay, sixty days. Yep, so I want to make a motion to extend the date sixty days.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend this item for sixty days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
And thus concludes.
Thank you. Property, Counselor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we extended, we continued the public hearing regarding the poll locations on Loudville Road. You also should have received an email just clarifying that there's actually a fifth poll involved in this conversation now, a support poll, due to the expert due diligence of our council president and some other councilors. We did determine that these polls are already installed. So the question is, what do we do from here? We have a meeting scheduled this Friday at 5:30. I don't typically like to schedule meetings on Fridays, but we needed to get it in, and there were multiple schedule conflicts in time for the scheduled public hearing at the March meeting. There's been some good conversations with Eversource, and the goal obviously is to arrive at a satisfactory consensus around this very unusual turn of events. As I mentioned, we'll be meeting in Conference Room One this coming Friday at 5:30. I will make sure I leave the various doors unlocked. I'll also request at this time in a 30-day extension as this item expires the day before our public hearing, so in the form of a motion, 30 days, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for 30 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
And thus concludes.
Just want to add, I sent an email to the city solicitor to ask, asking for some guidance. Those guidance are going to be discussed at the meeting, at the property meeting.
And thank you for doing that.
Rules, Counselor Krasinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules Committee had met since our last gathering for a full City Council meeting, and the subject matter was the Rule 5 of the City Council Rules, 5E, which calls for the Pledge of Allegiance to be recited at the beginning of each meeting that was instituted in 2013. The request by Counselor Denham was to have the addition of the language that says "or" a moment of silence. So the Pledge of Allegiance, "or a moment of silence" to be the new rule. Our discussion, I'll try to summarize it briefly. Counselor Denham had felt very strongly that not everybody is in agreement with the Pledge of Allegiance. Not everybody thinks that the Pledge of Allegiance maybe was, is what it was at one time, or that it could be. But that right now, there's a lot of folks, particularly, I think she had said, younger folks, who are not happy with the government and see the Pledge of Allegiance as a representation or a symbol of the government. I may be paraphrasing there, that, no, that this Pledge of Allegiance...
Would you like me to say it?
No, let me back off in the last statement, and I'll try to summarize it briefly. That is, that there could very well be a moment of silence. Let me get to that point. There'd very well be a moment of silence that would be at the discretion of the council president, and that would serve the public in terms of having all the councilors gather their thoughts, their spirit, their emotions, and center themselves for the business at hand. And that, in fact, if each person reflected on what was on their mind and what their heart, that they would be better served, and the council would be better served by that reflective matter than to recite a pledge that some people don't recite anyway, or some people drop a sentence here, or a phrase here, or a phrase there. So that was basically the presentation. There were other points that she made that were important, and you certainly should feel free to bring this up. The other councilors had questions. Counselor Gomez was very instructive about his experience with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll try to summarize that. If, again, I paraphrase it wrong, please feel free to jump in and correct me once I'm done. The, he grew up on the island of Puerto Rico, and he said, "We didn't recite the Pledge of Allegiance." And we didn't recite the Pledge of Allegiance for a variety of reasons, and very strong emotional reasons. And that, he said, he learned the Pledge of Allegiance when he was here in the United States, and that he since then recites the Pledge of Allegiance as a matter of, that's how the council does business. So it was interesting to hear that a territory of the United States and one territory that whose history I think may be described to the U.S. mainland differently than is described to those who grew up on the island. That neither here nor there. He felt that this, that the matter could be considered, and we should think about it a bit more. Counselor...
Terrell.
Counselor Terrell had suggested that we do an "and" rather than an "or," and that there be the Pledge of Allegiance for those who cared to stand up and do the pledge, and those who wanted the moment of silence. And Counselor Denham had felt, otherwise, I'm not going to get into the very deep details of that, because we ended up continuing the meeting so that we could discuss this at another time. And I thought it was very important that we reflect on what everyone's opinion was, because there were a lot of good opinions from folks who weren't all on the same page. And I will please thank everyone on the council who participated in a very respectful way. I was very pleased that this came about in a respectful manner, and I look forward to that continuing. The council, I mean, the committee will take up the matter at another time. I would like to, please, Counselor Denham, I see your hand, and may I, Mr. President, ask her to clarify any remarks that she may feel needed to be clarified, because I apologize if I didn't summarize it to your satisfaction.
I appreciate your comments, Chair, because I just, you added in one little bit there. And so for the people who weren't there, I made no comment about young people's attitudes towards the government or anything like that. There was absolutely no comment or reflection about attitudes towards the government or feelings about the government, et cetera. I think it was just about, what I was trying to emphasize was that if we are in equitable, if we want to create an equitable environment, then we should allow people to come authentically into that space and bring what other values that they do and not have this body impose such values, perceived values on them. And so it was, had nothing to do with the government or attitudes or the government or anything like that. So I just wanted to make sure that that...
My apologies to you. I apologize to you. I also know I have spoken to people who have opinions that were encompassed within my comments, and I didn't mean to ascribe them to you unfairly.
I appreciate that.
So thank you.
I appreciate that, yeah.
The, that matter will be, will be, will be continued. We'll pick that up. The special act to implement a multi-winner ranked choice voting system, I would request a 60-day extension for that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend that for 60 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
Thank you, and I will say we are meeting on February 28 on that matter, and that will be the subject. It will be 6:30 in Conference Room One. That'll be the subject of the discussion. I will also say that there's no great immediate urgency that we have to do something tomorrow, but it is something that's on the agenda, and we're addressing it. The next election that this could take place for, again, is not this cycle, but the following cycle. So although the legislature may work and have a very due diligence process and take some time, I think we're well within the bounds. There was also the ceasefire resolution, which we have scheduled on the agenda for March 13, which is our next meeting at 6:30 PM, again, in Conference Room One. This concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
I believe that's a Wednesday?
It'll have to be the same day of finance, probably. Before going to new business, I just want to make a clarification about that, yes, I learned the Pledge of Allegiance in Massachusetts because I didn't learn it when I moved to United States, because Puerto Rico is United States. I have to make that clarification. New business, Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only numbers we have is four mayoral appointments, so I will make these in a single motion. I move to send the following appointments to the Appointments Committee. Donna Quipilo, Affordable and Fair Housing, term expiration 12/31/25. Leila Strode, Board of Public Works, term expiration 12/31/2026. Evan Garber, Manhattan Rail Trail, 12/31/25. And Ronald Albertson, Manhattan Rail Trail, 12/31/25.
I have a motion and a second to move those four appointments to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a question.
Before, Counselor Denham, you first, and then you, Counselor Smith.
I do believe when we had public speak, not everyone had the opportunity to speak, and we were going to go back to that.
That's fair. No, that's fair. Thank you.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
That was my comment.
No, thank you. Thank you for reminding me that. Anyone for the public that want to address something to the council before we close the meeting? Looking none, so we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? See you soon. Have a great evening. Thank you, everybody.